Thursday, August 2nd, 2013, 7:00 PM. Right of occasion tonight will be by Ethan Ralph.
Good evening. Goodness pray. Good morning, Father, and we thank you for gathering us here this evening. We continue to ask that you bestow your blessings upon us this night. May you guide our leaders here gathered today in the direction of the bearer of our community and for those who are gathered here, that you bless them also and has given us a voice to speak about. To the bottom of our community and for the protection of others. May they who are sitting on the panel this evening be guided by your loving hand, by your Holy Spirit, that they too protect us and you watch over us every day here in Florida. We ask this through Christ our Lord, to live in reign of his one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Now would everyone please stand for the U.S. Civil Rights Act.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in all forms.
I am an honor to Texas pride. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one God, one one and indivisible.
Because Tom, I'd like to ask if we have any citizens comments?
Madam Mayor, one of the items that I neglected to get on the agenda was the Historical Society has done some wonderful things in the community. They've published a new book and I invited them to make a small presentation to the council. There's no action required by the council. Can we do that under a citizen's input?
Someone?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is okay, I talk very loudly. May I talk to both of you and the audience, please? Thank you. My name is Levana and I'm president of the Wilson County Historical Society and we're very blessed in this community to have a historical society like we do. I'm wearing this vest tonight because it was our sesquicentennial vest and whenever we had our sesquicentennial celebration in 2010, we really began to delve into what kind of archives did we have and what kind of records were we keeping in regard to the history of Florisville and Wilson County. But mainly the Wilson County Historical Society does do our work around the Florisville area. With me tonight is Jean Meko, who is president of the Wilson County Historical Commission. Jean, you want to wave your hand or something? Okay. And Maureen Lyles, who is our in-house historian and jewel of the community. And back there is Shirley Grammer, who we cannot do without her when she researches all the cemeteries and helps us get all the historical work done. Maureen Lyles and Shirley Grammer run the Archives Office here in Florisville, which is across the street from the Wilson County News and it's open usually on Monday mornings, but if you call, there is a lot of, just a large wealth of information that is there that we get emails and questions about all the time. So if you call the number that's on the door, somebody can help you or email us and we're on the website, the Wilson County Historical Society, and there's phone numbers and websites for everybody to call. One of the things that we wanted to let you know is that the function of our society is to preserve, tell and promote the wonderful history of Wilson County and Florisville, to meet and share knowledge of that history and collect historical documents and genealogical data, collect pictures of our county sites and people, place historical markers, publish books on historical subjects and to beautify the beautiful history helps to make the cities and Wilson County as a whole look good. We are proud of our history and have worked with Florisville and other communities. Right now, we have been doing a lot of work with the San Antonio River Authority. They have just finished a feasibility study on the El Camino Real de Tejas, which comes right down through Florisville going to the coast, which is a very historic trail. It has been designated by the National Park Service as such. We're working on this project that's been going on for a number of years, but they're now getting ready to publish that book in October. Florisville plays a very big part in that because we're right in the heart of El Camino Real de Tejas. And it also connects San Antonio, the missions are connected to the Rancho del Sol outside Florisville, which is the end of the National Park Service Historic Trail out of San Antonio, which includes Alamo, San Juan and other missions. So we're very pleased that we are having the opportunity to do more research. I have always been told, since I've been here in Florisville working on this since 1990, everybody says, well, nothing historic ever happened here. And they always said, you know, there's nothing historic around Florisville. Why are we even, why are you talking about it? What are you saying? And we're the richest area, closest to San Antonio in the Spanish colonial settlement of this area, the Canary Islanders and then the immigrants that came to start the farming and ranching. Longhorns that were raised right out here at the Luis Remchel Farm, it was shipped out to serve and feed George Washington's troops during the American Revolution. So there is built in to the wealth of information and history that we have. But just as a little side note to that, when people say nothing historic ever happened here, I happen to have about four pages here of things that are really instrumental to our area. One of, now this says these are historic structures on the east side of the San Antonio River. Men involved in Los Casas Revolt lived and planned the revolution along both sides of San Antonio River and the Alamo-Lava Air Road. Cespanto, Calabrese Mackey Brick Factory, Calabrese Cemetery, Calabrese Switch, Lebat Switch, Wag Sand Company Switch, the Doris Fisher Family Property, who was Canary Islanders. Casa Blanca, Home and Ranch, Erasmo Seguin, Texas Revolutionary Homes, this is where a river bend is. The Juan Seguin Home was located out there, the son of Erasmo. Rancho de Pactagui, near present day Floris or Lodi area, was the ranch of Mission San Juan Capistrano, Mission Indians cultivating crops in 1762. The ranch recorded 3,500 sheep and nearly as many cattle. The ranchland became a part of the Spanish land rent to Simone and Juan Orocha in San Rafael in 1782. Rancho San Rafael was granted to Semana Orocha in 1782. On the east side of the San Antonio River, it covers an area from Calabrese Creek to Pajarita Creek, just below Florisville and extends northeast to Marcelina Creek. Florisville, county seat of Wilson County in 1872. Courthouse was established in 1884. It was designed by a famed architect, Alfred Giles. It's the only courthouse, excuse me, the only courthouse designed by Giles that is still being used as a courthouse in the state of Texas, and he did many. The Lodi Ferry, documentation with historical marker, Paso de Les Muñeris, the ferry of cross, Lodi had come across our community. On the west side of the river, ferry in Greetown, Greetown, Canyon de Verde, Francisco Flores Ranch, Endo Ranch, Paso de Les Muñeris, Calvillo Rancho, Paso de Les Muñeris again, Camp Ranch, Rancho de Les Cabras, Paso de Caballos Crossing, O'Shea Ranch, Rancho Laguna de Anima, Spanish era, Elgato families and later Manuel San Bruno owners, CR 541. So there is just a deep hole, wealth full of information that need to be dug out and documented and so that we have something to show for our community that we are very rich in history and cultural development. Now, there is a new El Cibolo, what is it, El Camino de El, Camina?
El Cibolo.
El Cibolo, which is running into Southvale across 181, about out there by Angelicus, where that restaurant is and the old Summer Springs Road that goes that way. So that's another trail that's being developed by Jean and Maureen and Shirley to get a historical marker on that whole trail. We have, the Historical Society has really been blessed of late to have the Hong County Offering that has been taking place out at the Civic Center. This last August 1st, first Thursday of the month, we had over 650 people in attendance. Out of that, every month, every three months that we have that, we have at least 550 to 650 people. We have people now coming from all the way from Corpus up to Bandera to Austin that come to the offering particularly. We've been picked up by KKYX, they're advertising us now. Val Mahinky is the one who has produced that. Historical Society benefits from it. Our library is one of the richest sources that we have gotten of any kind of cultural and research. We are also connected with Corrals of Texas History, which the University of North Texas has a website that has just a wealth of Wilson County information and Florisville information. So I guess what we're here to tell you tonight is that we have this sesquicentennial book. We still have that for sale, it's for sale at the Wilson County News or any member of Historical Society. I left one for all the members of the council, along with a book that has been very well received across the state of Texas. It's the 44th Annual Reunion of Hoods Texas Brigade on October 13th and 14th in 1950. It was held here in Florisville, Texas. This is a very interesting book on the Hoods Texas Brigade during that time. And then we have a brand new book that's just been published and this one is Historical Markers of Wilson County. And so these books are all available on our website and they're also available at Archives and Wilson County News. And Jim Miller knows how to find this. We've got work here in the middle and give this to Jim, I think?
Well, I helped a little bit. It's actually even for sale at my place of business.
Okay, it's also for sale at Jeep's Place of Business. So we do have all these books available. We do hope that you will start paying attention to what's happening around you. And if you have any family members who have, that are wanting to get rid of old photographs and throw away old letters and things, don't throw them away. Put them in a baggie and bring them to the Historical Society or the Archives and Jean won't let us throw anything in the garbage. So any kind of letters or bills, I guess bills would work in there too. I don't know. He takes care of all that stuff. But don't throw anything away, especially if it's old pictures of the area, our old pictures of families who have settled this area. And a lot of people, when the junior historians were begun at our Historical Society request back several years ago, Tambria Reed is the leader of that, there were so many of those children in our Florisville school that had no idea that they were an Orocha, an original Orocha family, that they were a Elgato, that they were a Leal, that they were a Garza, or that they were any of the founding families of Florisville and this area. And when they begin to understand that, they begin to love the community and some of those junior historians right now are in college, have become teachers and they really have learned and grown through the opportunities that they've been given through the Historical Society and our junior historians. So I didn't really take as much time, but you have your books and we have them at the Archives Office. So we just encourage you, if you want to come with the Wilson County Historical Society, we meet the third Tuesday of every month at the American Legion Hall until we can get a new building. And that's another thing, there is, the county is trying to build the new courthouse next and if they do, we get the library and if they move the probation officers out next to the jailhouse museum, we get the Archives building. So that's what we're needing to store all this stuff, the Jean Tower, the Parrot's Trunk and Darned Hill and Luis Remchel House. And I didn't even mention, we have the Luis Remchel House, we have Jailhouse Museum and we also have Historical Society that meets the third Tuesday of every month. So give us a call if you need any information and thank you so much, appreciate it.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, now we're going to go on to number one, Old Businesses, A, Consideration in Action to Approve the Minutes from August 1st, 2013.
Madam Mayor, I've reviewed the minutes and make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 1st, 2013.
Okay, give me a second. You have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Gere, on the page. Call it, please. Motion carries four. Okay, now on to your presentation and update, financial update, June 2013, detailed listing fund balances, sales tax report, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second meeting of the month. We are now reporting for June 2013. We received your packet and the revenue expense report for all departments. We've also received the fund balance report and the detailed listing for the month. For the general fund, the financing, total financing for the group through June is $2,666,697. This includes $361,057 or 97.47 of your current MNO property tax collections. Collections for June are always very low. We have collected property tax 4,000, excuse me, 4,524. Sales tax report for the month is $109,118, which we talked about this last month. I'm reporting in here comparing it to last year and this year, it's not me, the budget's actually increasing this, we approved, actually amended budget. It's an increase of $9,581 compared to last year. Franchise fees, we receive electric monthly and again, we start with this last month in May, May was received on June 1st, so there are actually two payments both for each. General fund expenditure total $2,451,933 or 65% of the 12, 13 budget amended. We have, currently we have a recent study and we have several decisions that have been frozen as well. They, five weeks of payroll is approximately 77% and there have been 20 payrolls out of 26. Again, there's relatively variable that would occur in one week, June, some just day-to-day basic operations. So being full department, we discussed before, it's now starting to show 65% total spend. It's starting to slowly increase basically those salaries and that could pull this out of them for this month. The debt service payments, just to go with property tax side, property tax, again, the current and delinquent property tax plan, the debt service is $423,076 of this $406,004 on your current taxes at 97.47. We will be making payments, debt payments are due September 1st, you'll see some of those will be in your August report, some will be in September, not on due exactly on the 1st, so we actually probably give those appointments to that. Water sewer revenues, or, excuse me, water sewer funds, this, this month of June is prior to the budget amendment that we just passed on in July, so you'll see some of the lines don't jive with how it now looks as of July 11th. June 30th, the total financing sources was $1,783,59. Water residential commercial total $682,944 of that amount. Sewer residential commercial total $286,163. The rate increase, this is the first month that includes the rate increase that happened in April, this is the first billing that shows in your monthly finances. The, we, penalty, extra work, $2,533 customers billed on the 1st, on the 10th, 448 customers were calculated penalties, and the 20th, 120 customers remained on the 11th of August out of the 448. Utility expenditures total $936,115, which is only 57.32% of the budget. And follows the same, we've been talking about chemicals as your highest, sewer disposal being electricity is your highest expenses. After this, you'll start seeing worse, some repairs we started doing in July to the, I don't know how the areas are trying to hold by putting that, so there'll be some more expenditures showing. We've been talking in budget workshops about additional items that need to be prepared. Really was not forget much that occurred.
Yes, just one more. I want to thank you for the comprehensiveness of your report and the work that you've done on the budget and answering questions. One of the things that we were elected to in the budget workshop was the previous budget had a shortfall in how incentive and permanent pay was calculated and how overtime was budgeted and you're projecting a deficit of approximately $50,000 in the police department. How are we going to fund that and is that going to require another budget amendment?
We've been looking, we've already worked on the budget with you in July, going through with the vacancies that we have in the current year. We won't need to do a budget amendment, it's not necessary for us to do a amendment, but we, that, those vacancies will help absorb that.
So we're going to have to use dollars in a vacancy that exists within the Parks Department or within utility and transfer those dollars?
Not utility.
Or within another general fund department going to those vacancies into the police department to cover that. Okay. That transfer does not require a budget amendment?
We do not have to do a budget amendment. Again, we, we don't have to yet.
Okay, how, if I'm tracking the dollars in here and suddenly we move dollars from the Parks Department into the police department, how would that be indicated in either the detailed report or in our monthly reports?
When we, I won't move dollars, I would just, it would be over, that line would just be over.
So we would just show the police department over budget and the Parks Department under budget?
Yes. Yeah, and so in the financial statements of the end of the year, they're, that show police department, Parks Department, they would show the budget total, it doesn't show the, yeah.
Thank you.
You also had your fund balance report, so I don't, again, we talk every time we mention that we have the fund balances. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on the fund balances.
I just want to make the comment on that. I know Mr. Russell has made a number of presentations to the council over the cemeteries throughout through the years. The cemetery fund is very limited in how we can spend those dollars and it looks like we're going to end this fiscal year somewhere above $90,000 in that fund?
That's the net assets because it's different than general fund. So that's why in your budget document, it actually shows you about $50,000 in cash.
Okay.
So yeah, looking at that number, it will determine if you're in general fund.
Okay, so, but the point I'm trying to make in this is that we've got roughly $50,000 of those cemetery funds in next year's budget to do some capital improvements to our cemeteries. What those specifics are, we'll work out in the next couple of days and be able to present them to the public. But I want to thank Mr. Russell for his being a squeaky wheel, shall we speak, so to speak, to this council and the number of presentations and I think a lot of people have suddenly heard him and now we're going to reap some of those rewards. Thank you, Laura.
And then also your tax tax.
Now we'll do the investment report.
You received your packet, it's just a one-page report. This is required Public Fund Investment Act and your investment policy, as far as case has been. You, the total, again, this is a snapshot of the bank balances because it requires a. Again, the report, you've got, this will be your, so that'll be your third one. Yeah, the months are going by so fast. This will be your third one that you received. And again, it's a snapshot of your bank balances, so we have to make sure we're fully collateralized. So it doesn't mean that's what's in effect, because you have to get up checks for, for those amounts outstanding payable that we haven't been checked for, so that doesn't mean that's cash available, but cash is under that.
Sounds like it's a pretty straightforward report. Can we just enter it into the record and if we have questions?
It is very straightforward.
And that way we're not delaying people waiting for it, just reading numbers, we can enter it into the record, it'll be done.
New business, consideration in action to approve the ordinance establishing and add the law to tax limitation for residential home state property owners who are disabled at 65 years of age or older. I'm going to ask our councilor, Lou, to explain what was voted on last year by the previous council and whether or not pregnant.
I don't know if everybody has the memo that I sent last night, so I provided some examples. Madam Mayor and members of council, what we have tonight is a bit of a replay of what we did last year and if I may, I'd just like to track the memo that I prepared and sent for you somewhat late last night. Last year, the regular council meeting about this same time, August 23rd, on the item 1E, we had a CNN consider approving the tax agenda for residential property under 65 age, 65 years of age and older. This agenda item was discussed and a motion read and passed to approve the tax limitation, but not on exemption, as stated on the agenda, for property owners 65 and older as well as the secular residents. The item last year was never passed as an ordinance to the city, but rather as a motion. And as a number of you discussed with me and as I discussed with one of the councilors last year, this was an item last year, if you pass, there's some questions about it. And upon review of this matter and discussion with EML, we determined that this action is perhaps void under the Committee's Act because we discussed the item, we talked about the expansion versus permanent reduction. And since this is an agenda item with different legal consequences and different tax liability, it's probably well that we actually had the result that we had from last year, which was it was not picked up by the taxing authority because it was done by a motion. As a result, on this week's agenda, there's an item to approve that orders affecting the intent of the City Council's action regarding the tax limitation, however, and that relates to the item that I passed out that's got the orange on it. It is under Article 8, Section 1B8 of the Texas Constitution. Tax limitation may be established with reasons on over 65 or disabled individuals taxes on their homes at a rate currently in place on the date they turn 65 or are deemed disabled. And last year, what we did, we reduced taxes in general, we didn't do the permanent limitation which we're proposing tonight. And the important part about what you have in front of you is, is on the last sentence, the section reads, the governing body of the county. the section reads, "The governing body of a county, a city, or a town, or a junior college district may not repeal or rescind the tax limitations established under this subsection." And what that means is, is if we're at the lowest tax rate we did at in nineteen, twenty years, or whatever it is, a long, long time, if we implemented the provision that we're proposing to implement, it'll be permanent and forever. We can't do otherwise once we do that. And so, the other option we've got tonight is the alternative method, is item four by no, is providing relief for individuals over eight, sixty-five, or disabled, is the ability to establish a tax exemption by looking at the homestead of these individuals, and the same Article eight, section one B B, of the Texas Constitution provides, "The governing body of a city, county, town, school district, or other form of subdivision may exempt by its own action, not less than three thousand dollars of market value of a resident homestead person, married or unmarried, including those living alone, who are under a disability for purposes of payment of disability insurance, under the federal old age survivors of disability insurance, or its successor, or a married or unmarried person, sixty-five years of age or older, including those living alone, from all that long taxes thereafter levied by the local subdivision." This will allow the city to set a reduction in the tax evaluation for resident homestead at a number that can provide relief from taxes with a minimum of three thousand and no maximum. As the needs of the city may change, this number that we amended has dropped to a yearly to provide greater relief for those individuals or additional tax relief for the city, as each yearly budget may necessitate. And so, the proposal is, is to not use the limitation that becomes permanent and unmanageable, but to use the exemption, and to, my recommendation is, is to have some calculations down under some hyphos that your controller or you members of the council may suggest appropriate or opportunistic calculation by the appraisal district, so that you know what it is, if you want to grant an exemption on, if you do want to grant an exemption. So as the item is structured tonight, it's, it's to do a permanent, and I recommend that you not do a permanent, that you retain the flexibility of establishing for yourself what exemption level you may want from year to year, so that your budgeting process is more corporate, or more manageable.
Can I have two questions?
I hope that's somewhat clear.
Can I have two questions? One is, why did this pass last year and was not passed right? Where do we drop the ball?
Where we drop the ball is, this is an item that I did not spend a lot of time researching, and when the question was asked, I answered it as I did, which was that most items can be handled by a motion, this is an item that cannot be handled by a motion, and I have to say me a pro for that answer that I gave last year. However, the result, I think, ended up being fortunate, although not maybe well-planned or intentional, because the result we got is not a permanent, but an option to come back and redo the matter this year.
My second question is going to be, this exemption, like you're saying, would it apply to 2013, or will it be till 2014?
It would be applied to the next coming year, which would be two fourteen, two thousand fourteen.
Mayor, there is an exemption in place currently for 2013 for five thousand dollars, there is currently a five thousand dollar exemption, for over sixty-five, yes, and it has been in place. What you could do is, um, like, say, the twenty-fourteen, maybe it's possibly a fifteen thousand dollar exemption, but for twenty-fourteen, it's for over sixty-five people that have an over sixty-five exemption, they are, where you receive a five thousand dollar exemption.
How many would take the required amendment?
Um, yes, so of course, twenty-fourteen, we would need to pass it by ordinance, uh, for the additional amount for that year, and if it changed every year, there would need to be an ordinance done every year. If not, it could roll over, but it would need to be done in that fashion.
So, Councilor, we still have the opportunity to affect next year's taxes, 2014.
But we're proposing as the agenda structure tonight, the limitation, which is-
I understand, I, I've read the, the ordinance and, and read your email and found some, some history where, where, uh, some communities in the state have gone near bankrupt using the outright-
Permanent limitation.
Correct. Let me see if I can do this correctly, uh, I want to move to table indefinitely this ordinance.
How about we simply move to table?
Okay, move to table, and then, in the next meeting, we should be able to pull some data together to say, as we go through our budget workshops in the next few days, as to what the most effective exemption is going to be.
Effective or appropriate, and you've been advised that you have applied that now?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, uh, the vehicle was there, but the result was good.
You could timeout, Mr. Russell. Do I have a motion to-
Can I be downed for the rest of the night?
I have a motion to table for Councilman Miller, can I have a second?
Well, I was just going to have a question, so we'd be tabling, we're looking at tabling this for, just to get more information as to what this would do to our current budget cycle.
No, Laura, we, we would table this and rewrite the ordinance as an exemption or amend the existing one, but before we can do that, we need to know the answer to the question, if we extend the, or up the exemption from five thousand to, as Ms. Pollak brought up the example of fifteen thousand, what is that going to do in this current budget cycle for us? How much less ad libor tax would the city be receiving, and what adjustments will we have to make in the budget?
And that amount is based on what, the, the, the final, the, the, the final taxes, the, the total, total tax total?
There would actually be a review of police departments, disabled, and do it on the homestead, and see what the impact would be, and maybe determine what exemption you want to ask to the current or not.
Well, and, and the current year, you're going to get a five thousand dollar exemption. The ordinance that you're going to be working on is going to be for next year's tax, so it won't be this year's budget, it will be next year's budget.
The fourteen, fifteen budget.
Right, fourteen, fifteen budget will be affected by-
How did this match up in the city input?
Uh, the city of Florence is the only city in Wilson County that, that hasn't applied to it, and it was applied, um, in the late nineties or the two thousands.
So why were you doing this last year, and where are the other questions?
Um, Ms. Chair is asking some questions about the tax saving and about raising the exemption and that kind of thing, that we brought up, and that's when we found out that there currently was an exemption. Currently, it's only for over sixty-five, so in the ordinance, we could do it for over sixty-five and disabled people, we can, disabled persons could be included in that as well, and the exemption amount contained as well, but it won't be for this year's budget, or this year's tax year, it would go for what we would be working on for 2014, fifteen. But currently, for this year, the five thousand dollars is still in place, and they are still going to get that exemption, and it's already rolled into the tax numbers that we've received already from the tax office.
But that's just for the over sixty-five, that including the-
Disabled persons, that is correct, and that's the way it's been in place for-
So we don't have the ability, then, and, and this is where I'm a little confused, if we are in a budget process to set a tax rate that people are going to be charged in 2014, we do not have the ability to provide an ordinance, ordinance to give additional relief at the same time to those people sixty-five and older, or those disabled in that same tax term?
This year, we can't affect, we can affect-
Which is the fourteen, fifteen, the tax years are off, that could make you get these years confused, the taxes are twenty, that are going to be coming out in October, the tax bill is for the year, tax year 2013, we can't modify that at this point, which will not affect-
Okay, I understand, I understand what you're saying, okay, yeah, because the tax year's backwards, the tax rate that we're adopting will not be billed till the end of next year. Okay, thank you.
But the other point that Mr. Rodriguez brings up, I think is a good one, and you, you want it to be table permanently, I think the point is, unless you want to tie your hands, it may be the more appropriate thing to do tonight, is to simply vote this down. And dispose of the inflexible approach, and then retain the flexible approach, which is-
You're going to re-bring up a different ordinance at any time, just vote this one down, this provide.
Oh, and is due to any future decisions that we want to make on this ordinance?
And you retain the right to make future decisions, but you wouldn't make a permanent one, which is the one we don't want to make, or we don't-
If you decided you could actually bring the ordinance back on the agenda and go items and go on with it again, that's your question, if you choose to, this route, you don't want to bring it back at a different time.
My answer, you said, you're following-
Yes, so-
This mechanism, I'm recommending you don't follow.
So basically, deny.
Well, with, with your recommendation, I will draw my motion.
And Mayor, to answer your question, the reason this was put on the agenda a year ago, um, last year, was because citizens requested it.
You know, I need a motion.
Motion not to approve the ordinance as presented.
Councilman Miller's made the motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman, Willard is the second, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries, five, zero. Okay, now we're going to go into the executive session, and I just wanted to mention that these items can be discussed in executive session or for review only, and will have no action taken. And it's going to be, A, adjourned to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one, conduct private consultation with his attorney concerning the following current ending, or threat litigation, proposed to con Supreme's Harvey Hart previously tabled on March fourteen, 2013, and B, adjourned to executive session pursuant to section five five one zero seven four, the Texas Government Code Personnel Matters, to deliver the appointment, interim appointment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, this will be reviewing applications for city management. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Before a motion, Councilor, is, is that correct, we want no action, right?
Well, we're probably going to end up announcing certain schedules, which we've already posted, but other than that, there'll be no other action.
Okay, so, so moved.
Can I have a second? Then we go to the second session, seven forty-eight.